The Board of Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues, Maryland Local Government Code Article, Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The Board of Education will now enter into executive session. The Board will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Thank you very much. I think we'll just move right into the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Board reports. Peter, we'll let you go first.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rasba. On May the 15th, at Chopticon High School, I attended the National Academy of Finance commencement ceremony that was held there. And students that were graduating from the National Academy of Finance four-year program at the Tech Center, or, excuse me, at Chopticon High School, were recognized for commencing. As you know, the National Academy of Finance is one of the career pathways that the school system offers for students to take, all four years going through high school, taking different business courses and math and math courses as well, that's integrated in their curriculum. So they do, in fact, graduate with having that extra financial literacy and business knowledge going into college. And there are also quite a number of student speakers that were there who spoke very well and gave introductions, as well as a lot of scholarships that were given to graduates and people who were commencing from the program, which is very good to see as well. And a lot of them are also going to four-year colleges to study in business as well. On May the 21st, at the, at Leonardtown High School, there was the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center commencement that was held for students who had graduated from the program to the Tech Center, another career pathway choice for students to go through that were going through high school. There were a lot of families and students that were there that commenced and that graduated. It was really good to see everyone there. I commenced from the Forrest Center last year as a student, and I was very glad to be able to go back this year and see all the new students that were going to be commencing as well. And those two events are also leading up to the graduations that are going to be happening in the next couple of days, starting with Great Mills on Wednesday, Chopticon High School on Thursday, and Leonardtown on Friday. So hopefully, everyone goes through that process safely and efficiently. And with that, also, with graduations coming up, this is going to be my last board meeting as a student board member. And with that, I'd like to thank the Board, and everyone else especially, for supporting me through my bullying initiative that I've had throughout my term as student member. And I'm very glad that I was able to really give a voice and speak up, speak up, and do my campaign as well. And I got, received full, full support from the community and from the Board of Education and the school system as well. It wouldn't have happened without them and you guys as well. So thank you for listening to what I had to say. And with that, I would like to introduce the next student board member on the Board of Education, who is actually here today for another recognition, but I'd like her to stand up by a car named Ms. Sarita Lee from Great Mills High School. All right. Thank you. And best of luck to you for your next term. Thank you, Dr. Rasba.
Thank you, Peter. We're going to miss you, Peter. Keep in touch.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Crosby.
I've had the honor of sitting by Peter this year. He's just a wonderful young man with the very best, highest character you can imagine. I went to his award ceremony Friday. I have, Chopticon is very close to my heart because in 1970, when I was old, as you can imagine, I taught there. But I never quite made the graduation because I had my first baby. And anyway, I've been now to six as long as I've been on the Board. So that was especially special for me to be at your award ceremony. Peter got two awards. One was a DAR award, and that stands for the Daughters of the American Revolution, of which my mother-in-law was one of those. And it's very difficult to get in. You have to have a lineage that goes back to the American Revolution. My daughter could be one. I can't. Anyway, he, he got that award, which is for character and patriotism and service. He also received the Dr. James A. Forrest Scholarship, which is again for their, his progress at the James A. Forrest Center, which is just wonderful. So Peter, we're, I'm really going to miss you, but we have a nice young lady who's going to be here. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Thursday evening, I attended the BECA Awards Ceremony. And as we all know, the BECA is the Business Education and Community Alliance, Inc. What they, BECA has awarded one-time scholarships to St. Mary's High School graduating seniors. And to date, they've awarded 225 scholarships, totally more than 200 grand. But BECA also administers a St. Mary's County Common Core Scholarship Application, allowing students to apply for numerous local scholarships. Using this one-time application, and since it was introduced in 2006, over $2 million has been divvied out to our students. So I definitely want to reach out and thank BECA. They've got three leading officers, Bob Schaller, Colleen Blondell, and our own Mark Smith, that have done a fantastic job administering all these scholarships and dotting all the a's and crossing all the t's, so to speak. It was a great evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Good evening. On Thursday, May 15th, I attended the National Academy of Finance Class of 2014 Completion Ceremony at Chopticon High School. The Academy of Finance is one of our career path at St. Mary's County Public Schools. It was a full commencement ceremony with Mr. Todd Burrows directing, directing the symphonic band, Ms. Sarah Vents directing the Chopticon Peace pipers, and speeches by student leaders, National Academy of Finance Professional Advisory Council, and the Superintendent of Schools. What is the National Academy of Finance? It is a specialized school that is housed only at Chopticon High School, which provides a course of study in business, finance, and management. Students gain practical experience, participate in field trip opportunities, gain internships, some paid and some unpaid, and develop course projects. Students also able to participate in work-based learning activities to put their lessons into action. Through this rigorous program of study, students are made aware of the skills necessary to be successful in the business world and college completion. Some of the business courses the students take are Principles of Accounting I, Principles of Finance, Managerial Accounting, AP Economics, Business in a Global Economy, Global Diplomacy, Business Ethics, Financial Planning and Financial Services, and Business Internship, just to name a few. Our program is approved through the Maryland State Department of Education and the National Academy Foundation. Fifteen seniors completed the program. In the fall, 100% of the students will be enrolled in a two-year or four-year college or university. These schools include the University of Maryland, College of Southern Maryland, Prossberg State University, Towson, Delaware State, and College of Maryland, Delaware State, St. Mary's College of Maryland, and Coastal Carolina University. A total of five scholarships were awarded. Mr. Chris King, Riley Watts, and O'Neal gave $1,000 scholarship to Alexandra Fencannon. Mr. Jesus Godinez, National Contract Management Association, gave $500 to Susan Marie Lombray. Mrs. Colleen Blondell, Business Education and Community Alliance, gave $1,000 scholarship to Nicholas Andrew Minor. Ms. Melanie Mattingly, Education Systems Federal Credit Union, gave $500 to Rachel Nicole Potts. And John Walters, Edward Jones, gave $1,000 to Tyler Stephen Williams. Special thanks go to the National Academy of Finance Professional Advisory Board, which consists of 18 professionals from the business government and contracting businesses. Chairman of the Advisory Board, Mr. Chris King, Mr. John Walters, National Academy of Finance Professional Advisory Council, Mr. Michael Bowles, the coordinating teacher, Mr. Garth Bowden, principal, Mr. Michael Egan, supervisor, Ms. Cynthia Biden, FBLA sponsor, and the building service workers who ensured the comfort of the audience and the setup of the auditorium. It was a wonderful program, and it was a delight to see the students complete the program and 100% are going to college in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Allen.
I'm happy to say that the arts are alive and well in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Across the country, you often hear that school systems, for budget reasons or curriculum reasons, make a decision to cut out art and music, band, chorus, from their curriculums. And we have never moved in that direction. I hope we never do. The arts are delivered in a lot of different ways within the school system. But on May the 15th, I was invited, along with other board members, to have the opportunity to go to Piney Point Elementary School, where the PTA had done some significant fundraising to bring in a musician by the name of Tom Chapin. You may have heard of his brother, Harry Chapin, who back in the 70s or 80s did Cats in the Cradle and a number of other songs. Well, Tom Chapin also had a television program called Make a Wish, and he would go off on flights of fancy of what you could do with your imagination and creativity. And he's gone around the country now, over the last number of years, doing concerts at a lot of different venues, especially in schools, and with the idea that it's important to recycle, it's important to, to believe in yourself. He has a number of very wholesome, very positive messages that resonate well within what this Board believes. And so the, the PTA invited him four years ago, and Mrs. Washington and I attended that concert. And I went down there to see him perform now four years later. The difference that I was struck by was that, as he began the first opening notes of a number of his songs, immediately, every child in the gymnasium sang, started the song for him and kept going. And they did hand motions, and they knew all of the words, and they were singing with extraordinary enthusiasm. And he was really quite taken by the fact that the students obviously knew his music and knew his message. And so kudos to everyone in the PTA at Piney Point, who spent the time to make sure that they could bring this wonderful artist to entertain, to, to provide a positive message to their students. And kudos to the music department there and to the students who were able to, to really bring home that message and to share their enthusiasm for his music and his message with him. It was a very impressive day, and, and I'm very proud of everyone there at, at Piney Point. And for the lovely reception that, and when I got there, they were, they were very kind in making sure that, you know, that I had a spot to sit in, because I will tell you that place was packed. And well-deservedly so. So congratulations to everyone at Piney Point Elementary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I also attended the Becker Scholarship Program, St. Mary's County Business Education and Community Alliance, along with Mr. Matthews and the rest of the Board. And it's really a beautiful event, isn't it? Students getting scholarships and over two, was it $2 million?
To date.
To date in scholarships. Phenomenal, phenomenal. Different organizations donating money, individuals contributing, and it tells you something about our community. A community comes together for our children, and when it's time to help kids move on to college or other careers, other schools, and they could apply for these scholarships and the money's available. So beautiful event. Some of you I know were there. I recognize some of your faces, and I think you would, would agree. So thank you very much, Board members, for attending, and Superintendent was there.
Yep.
And we had a good time. It's one of those great events out of so many of them that we enjoy immensely. Dr. Marterano, I bring this to the Superintendent Report, please.
Very good. Good afternoon, Board members. It's great to see you. And Peter, we wish you so much during this week. You graduate, and you've just done such a wonderful job in terms of being our student board member. And Sarita, where are you? Right there. We are so proud of you as well. Give her another round of applause if you're our student board member. She was outstanding. I think I've known you my entire time living in St. Mary's County, and wow, we're just so honored that you're going to be a member of the Board, and so it's going to be in great hands. We're going to talk more about you, Peter, momentarily, as we do, we're going to do some formal recognition as well. So good evening, everybody. It's great to see you. You've already heard from our Board members. It's a very exciting time of the year. I'm absolutely, I love Mrs. Allen's expression, extraordinary enthusiasm, sort of like onomatopoeia, you know, in terms of it sounds that way, or alliteration. And I love this time of the year. Board members, I know you do as well. We will begin our graduations this week. Tomorrow night, we will celebrate with Great Mills High School at St. Mary's College, and we'll begin the graduation process, leading into Chopticon High School, followed by Leonardtown High School. Actually, it kicks off tonight at St. Mary's College with Reichen High School graduation. So this is a very celebratory time for all of our young people, and it's emblematic of where we are as a community. And as I talk oftentimes about our indicators of success, there are a number of qualitative and quantitative measures. And knowing that I have a number of parents here this evening, we should be very, very pleased about the results of our school system. And you've heard me talk about our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate overall for our school district, in the fact that it's 91.5. And I always say, anybody who understands data and statistics and metrics and analytics understands the fact, you don't just throw numbers out without having them challenged and asking, "In comparison to what?" So when I say the four-year graduation rate for St. Mary's County is 91.5, you say, "In comparison to what, Dr. Marterano?" And I say, "In regards to the state average, which is approximately about 84, 85%. St. Mary's County," what I say is 91.5. So if I were to say to you then, "In comparison to what, the national average for graduation rate is in the high 70s, what's St. Mary's County? 91.5." So if you think about the state of Maryland being the top school state in the, in the United States for education, is ranked by a number of indicators, by Education Week. If Maryland is the number-one state in education in the United States, St. Mary's County in the state of Maryland has a graduation rate of 91.5, puts that at the sixth, seventh highest in the state of Maryland, let your mind think about that in terms of comparison to the rest of, the rest of America, with the performance of our young people as we are preparing them to be outstanding citizens, but college and career-ready. So tonight is very symbolic in the fact that we have a number of our students here who will be receiving recognitions. And I love the extraordinary enthusiasm, another E-word to put in there with the exhilaration, excitement, and enthusiasm and energy that is just real for our overall school system. So it's an exciting time. I'm looking forward to the next three days. I'm, I've, I know many of my board members are very concerned. I've been working my hand to make certain it's in prime shape, because I will shake the hand of every young person who graduates, and I'm sort of like the, I like to keep that streak going, you know, in that sense. So it's an exciting evening for our community, for our parents, for our young people, and we're very pleased about that. But we have a couple other things. We have a number of recognitions tonight. As I said, very busy time, have to divide and conquer amidst all the activities that are occurring. And I want to acknowledge the Maryland Head Start Association, M H S A, has announced the appointment of Ms. Kelly Dobson, our own Head Start Coordinator, to a two-year term to their Board of Directors. Board positions are determined through an election process, and the Board meets four times a year for the purpose of making policy and strategic planning for the development of the Maryland Head Start Program. And we congratulate Kelly Dobson for that. As you know, we received that wonderful grant that allows us to, to implement our Head Start Program that formalizes our process of putting more focus on the early interventions, early literacy, and making certain we keep that fidelity to our instructional program strong. And again, parents, as you recognize, the graduation rate does not just rest with our high schools. We are very concerning, and we start that at pre-K and absolutely at birth, making certain that every young person has the advantages of starting out with being able to understand the processes of being able to read, being able to be very literate in terms of reading as well as numeracy and mathematics. So those processes are starting early, and we want to ensure that all of our young people are reading at a proficiency level by the beginning of grade three. Want to congratulate Dr. Andy Roper. I don't know if he's in here tonight or not. We've got a number of recognitions going on. Our Supervisor of Physical Education for serving as a panelist on Making Wellness Work Conference in Baltimore, and I understand he did an outstanding job of representing our county at a statewide presentation. Barrett, are you here? Where is Barrett? Can you come quickly and turn the, the Elmo on for me, too, and put these two pictures up for me, if you would? And I'll go to the next ones as we are jumping. If you would jump and run those over there as we're setting those up. I've already talked about our graduations, but what I want to announce, if you have friends or if you have individuals who are graduating, we put this out on several press releases, is that for the first time, as we take our technology advances to the next level, we will be, not only will we be having individuals that will be in the auxiliary gym, and we will be videotaping it in for them to see the live ceremony, we will also be streaming live from all over the world. Anybody who wants to, wants to tune in to our graduations can watch them live, and then they will be on YouTube the next day. Our way to reach out to the recognition that one-third of our parent, student community is represented by the military connections with that. So we're very excited about that for tomorrow evening, as well as Thursday and Friday. So Board members, I direct your attention to the picture that I have on the overhead. That is two of our outstanding employees, Louis and Rysland Barnes. They received the St. Peter Claver Catholic Outstanding Educator Support Professional Award. That's a mouthful. At church services last Sunday at St. Peter Claver's Church, I was in attendance with my wife, and Mrs. Washington was there, and a number of our staff members. This church is very, very, very alive and well with their contributions to young people in terms of what they do for programming and service, and they also spend time recognizing our staff members. We're very proud of them. I know they're not here tonight. If they are, and I miss them, I didn't, they didn't know that I was going to do this tonight, just give them a round of applause so when they watch that, they'll see that they're recognized, outstanding. And, and what I like is Louis was sitting behind me in church when this was going on, and I kind of peeked over. He says, "You knew this was happening, didn't you?" And he's a very humble man, as well as his wife, and they were very surprised and very humbled by the whole presence of it. So it was a wonderful event. Also want to, put the next picture up, if you would. This is something that is extremely exciting. As you know, we focus in, and that's not the best of picture. And I think there's a second one there, Barrett. If you, do you have the second one as well? You can't see it there as well, but that's the best one. That is actually a UAV that has, it's called the Neptune USA UAV. Unmanned aircraft vehicle has been placed on permanent loan at, from the Patuxent Naval Air Station. That is now on display in the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And one of our former board members, Mr. Gary Kessler and Dr. Rasba, were having conversation informally, and Dr. Rasba talked about the, this possibility of obtaining this, and Mr. Kessler ran with the idea, working additionally with Dr. Rasba. We had this delivered two weeks ago. It is now on display above the doorways as you exit the facility. So put your eyes up as you're looking to that, as you'll see that. Peter, have you seen it already?
Yes, I walked by it a couple times.
Yeah.
I was going to say, that picture, though, it's a little bit dark.
Yes.
It will give people an understanding of the scale of it. When you, when you look up there, you, you think it looks like a little model airplane.
Exactly.
When you see it with people standing beside it before it was mounted, you'll see that it's larger than it appears.
It's a real one, and we are very fortunate. Recognizing the significance of our Career and Technology Center, I refer to it as our College and Career Readiness Center. You know, in many ways, our young people are going in their 24 different programs, and we have some wonderful programs designed to meet the needs of our 21st century learner and always forward-thinking with our connections to our community and enhancing the connection to the workforce. So we're very pleased with that partnership overall. And Dr. Rasba, I'm going to make my report very, very brief this evening, because we have a wonderful crowd of many, many of my good friends. My student friends are here, staff member friends are here, as well as our parent community and members from the community at large. So let's begin our recognitions, and I turn it back to you, sir.
Okay. Let's begin our recognitions with the Maryland Star of Life Citizen Award. And Dr. Marterano, we could take pictures after each group. Is that right?
We will. So we've got a number of students here tonight, and I'm very concerned, as you know, I want to make sure that you're home early enough for your homework, okay? So instead of everybody waiting until the end, what we're going to do is, at the end of each recognition, if you're just impatient, I'll give other duties as a sign and line everybody up for a picture, and then we'll get a picture, and we'll post that on our website as well. And then you're free to go home and do your homework, and we'll sign. Okay? We're going to be in the process. Okay, so William Kenny. William, could you please join me up here, if you would? Board members, this is a very special, heartfelt presentation this evening. You didn't realize probably what was going to happen this evening. And if you would just sit that there momentarily. It's so good to see you. How you doing?
Good.
Good, I'm glad you're here. Is your, are your parents here? Who's here with you tonight?
Yeah, both back there.
Okay, so both back there, as well as, your grandfather's here as well?
Brother.
Okay, and you have some other members here, too?
Brothers back there.
Okay.
Other brother in college.
Okay, so brothers are here, two brothers?
Yeah.
Another brother in college. Okay, so Board members, this is signi, so somebody else you're pointing to?
Yeah, middle. What about your grandma?
Oh, mine, okay. All right.
Oh, are you in trouble?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just got you in trouble. We'll get a special picture just with you, okay? We'll help you on that. All right, so Board members, this is exciting because the fact is we, one of our students was awarded the Maryland EMS Citizen Award, William Kenny. He is, and this was given to him, Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services System, was nominated, and we're so proud, for heroism and compassion in displayed in ensuring the safety of others in rendering aid to victims after a motor vehicle accident that occurred. And he was acknowledged and recognized by the Governor, I believe, was, was he in attendance?
Yeah, he in trouble.
Okay. Boy, I'm getting in trouble all over the place tonight here. May 21st in Indianapolis, and I, and you know personally, as I'm having this conversation with you, I had every great intention to be with you during that recognition, because I'm so proud of you. That's why we want to do a recognition tonight. But if you remember, a very tragic incident occurred last year in our community where there was a bus accident involving an individual who then ultimately lost his life in the, in the, in the car accident. I was there on the scene right after it happened, and our students, we were very, very concerned about everybody and the possibility of the injuries that could have occurred, et cetera. It was just a horrific event. We had some very strong heroism displayed by the bus driver, who made some strategic maneuvers to avoid any further incident. But William, just reacted. You were a student at the Forrest Center.
Yes, sir.
Trained in what program?
Fire rescue.
Fire rescue. Jumped off the bus and provided aid- Jumped off the bus and provided aid to the victim. And talk about the heroism. You know, oftentimes, you think about adults, you know, would they have the ability to do that? As one of our fine young people, and you know, that afternoon, I went over and spent some time talking with you and your classmates and individuals who were involved in that. You impressed me beyond belief that day. And so when your mom communicated with me about the nomination process, I was more than honored to provide some support for that. And I'm so honored that you were able to receive this recognition, that, you know, the beautiful thing, ladies and gentlemen, about our young people in this community is, you know, we oftentimes talk about the importance of their grades and their grade point average, but I can tell you firsthand, you know, I know so many of these young people firsthand, known them all as they've started their progress rankings when they started in fourth grade and as they continue through, that the character that is displayed by our young people, the courage, the kind of quality of young people that are, there's so much hope in the future for our world when you know that there are young people like all the students here tonight, as well as the fine example like William Kenny. So, William, I know that you've received this wonderful plaque here, and you've received this wonderful lapel pin, it looks like, as well. I'm going to add to your collection, and I'm going to give you a certificate that states that in recognition of being awarded the Maryland Star of Life Emergency Medical Services EMS Citizen Award for courageous action on March 13th, 2013, this is signed by Dr. Sal Raspa, Chairman of the Board, and myself, Dr. Materano, as Superintendent of Schools. Sir, we are so proud of you, and it just assures me that I live in a community that has people like you in it that takes care of others, that lifts people up and takes care of individuals. So I'm so proud of you. Thank you very much. Keep him around. We are so proud of him. So if I could ask his grandmother, come on down. We're going to get a family picture with everybody, so you join as well. All his family members, if you would join us. Grandfather is here as well, mom and dad, brothers. Board members, join me if you would. William, just take this all up there.
The next recognition is the Middle School Math Counts Competition. Dr. Mar and Dr. Materano.
Thank you, Dr. Raspa. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to present this recognition, serving on behalf of Mr. Alex Jaffers, our secondary mathematics supervisor who was unable to be here this evening. But we want to recognize our middle school math counts competitors. On February 1st, 2014, middle school students from Esperanza, Lenartown, Margaret Brent, and Spring Ridge Middle School represented St. Mary's County Public Schools at the Southern Maryland Math Counts Competition at Theodore Davis Middle School in Charles County. A mix of 19 public and parochial middle schools from Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's Counties, consisting of over 100 students participated in this event sponsored by the Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative, SMECO. Middle school teams that finished in the top five overall and individual participants that scored in the top 25 percent of the regional competition were invited to participate in the Math Counts Maryland State Competition held on Saturday, March 15th, 2014, at Johns Hopkins University. We'd like to recognize the students who competed in this program, and as I call each school up, I'm going to ask that they come forward and receive a certificate. We will call each of the schools up together, along with their coaches. And please walk the red carpet, starting at the back and walking center stage for us. We'll start with Esperanza Middle School with our coaches, Chris Adams and Gabriel Sevek. The students I'd like to call forward who are present this evening are Rachel Appleby. And I don't know if Matthew Bobrowski came in, did he? And Emmy Stats. The other students who were not able to attend this evening, and if you did sneak in, please come forward, we do have a certificate for you as well. Andrew Feddersen, Margaret Holmes, Allison Robinson, and Slade Scriber. Esperanza finished 12th overall in the team competition, and Esperanza students that qualified for the state competition placed in the top 25 percent of all individual students were Margaret Holmes and Emmy Stats, as well as Josh Graffill. For Lenartown Middle School, the coach was Mr. Nick Cox. And the students from Lenartown who are here this evening, Rosa Bates. And I don't believe I saw him come in, Ray Mark Trazan. Lenartown Middle School finished third overall in the team competition, and Ray Mark Trazan finished fifth overall and placed in the top 25 percent of all individual participants. From Margaret Brent Middle School, Coach Craig Majarevsky. Students from Margaret Brent had multiple commitments this evening and were not able to attend, but we applaud them in their absence. They finished eighth in the team competition. And finally, from Spring Ridge Middle School, the coaches are Bridget Donbar and Dr. Gary The students present for Spring Ridge Middle School, Adam Abril. And the students who were not able to be here from Spring Ridge Middle School, let me read their names as well. Hannah Cha, Kaylee Chase, and Andrew Nixon. Spring Ridge finished 11th overall in the team competition, and David Canavo, who finished 12th overall, qualified for the state competition by placing in the top 25 percent. And also, I apologize, I did not read the names of the Margaret Brent Middle School students, so let me, please indulge me, I'd like to read their names. Ben D'Angelo, Austin DiStefanos, Tommy DiStefanos, Jacob Dolinar, Alessandra Huerta Hernandez, Alex Oliver, Sydney Rye, and Noah Tac. Please, let's give them a round of applause.
So you know how I feel about all of you. I am so proud of you. What a wonderful accomplishment, and thank you for being here this evening. Board members, join me, if you would, in a thunderous round of applause for these outstandingly Okay. So now the biggest challenge that I have is getting a big picture of everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, the next recognition is the SMECO Mathematics Challenge Recognition. Rebecca Loker and Dr. Materano. How are you this evening?
Fine, how are you?
Excellent.
The Southern Maryland Electric Cooperative forms an amazing partnership with St. Mary's County Schools, both public and private, in supporting both the math counts and the math challenge competition. And I'd like to recognize Mrs. Bernadette Lewis, who's in the audience tonight from SMECO, and show her our appreciation. I want to be clear that this partnership sponsors not just the event itself, but the thousands of hours, I calculated earlier, like 5,000 hours of elementary school students and coaches' times doing outstanding mathematics throughout the year. So this is a big and important partnership that means a lot to our students. They all come prepared on, they came on Saturday, April 26th, to Margaret Brent Middle School to compete. There are about 250 students, representing 19 schools, mostly public and some private. While we wish we could announce all the athletes and coaches, since there were 19 schools, we'll just recognize the top scorers. The individual winners in grade two, they take a 45-minute individual test, so these are our top scorers. The individual scores for grade four, I'm sorry, are, third place, Joseph Arnold from All right, in second place, we have Holland Henderson Boyer from Ridge Elementary School. We had a tie for first place this year, and tied for first place are Shen Rothenmel from Green Holly Elementary School and Jacob Weller from Lenartown Elementary School. All right, so for fifth grade, our individual winners are, yes, Jacob, sorry. I'm going to tie for third place in fifth grade. Tied for third place are Eliana Durkey from Evergreen Elementary School. And James Thompson from Evergreen Elementary School. Sharp, aren't they? In second place, we have Hannah Torgeson from the Chesapeake Public Charter School. And once again, we had a tie for first place. Tied for first place are Derek Nichols from the Charter School. And Luke Wickrowski from Evergreen Elementary School. All right, now what happens at the math challenge competition is they take a 45-minute individual test, and then the students take a team test. Actually, it's reverse order, but they do a team test where they're given some challenges that are very, very challenging, that they have to solve as a team. And what we do is we combine the scores, the top five individual scores from a team with the team score, and to come up with the team winners. This year, our fourth grade first-place team came from Lenartown Elementary School. I believe Ms. Eichel is here, representing her school, and we have Kayden Byers. This is Madison. Those two boys are wearing their team shirts. And they're coached by Ms. Kim Knight and Ms. Courtney DeBorak. I believe Ms. Knight's here tonight, is that right? I can't tell you how much I appreciate the countless hours these coaches put into coaching these students and spending time with them. All right, our fifth grade team winners, and this is a big deal to be winning as a team. The fifth grade team winners are Kirsten Augustine. And Dr. Materano, you guys look behind you for Lou Krikrowski. Did I miss James Thompson? James Thompson. And their coach, Mrs. Janine Davis-Smith. And that's it. This is a big competition, they did a good job.
This is exciting. So, what a wonderful group of young people. How are you tonight?
Good.
Excited?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of you got the giggles tonight, that's a good thing. Very happy. So, board members, where is Bernadette Lewis again? How are you?
I'm fine.
Good, I know you don't like the attention, but we are just so honored to have you here tonight. Tell my good friend Joe Slater how pleased we are with the program, and you see what occurs here for our young people. I had the opportunity to be in attendance at the event, many of you remember me being there that day, and the place was packed on a Saturday morning. I was concerned that the fire marshal was going to come around and close us down, there were so many people there. But it was an excellent way to spend a Saturday morning, and with the results, just all the conversation about math and just a wonderful evening. So I am so proud of all of you. I want you to continue to work hard, I want you to continue to excel to your highest abilities, continue to make us proud, which you do every day, and over the summer, I don't want you to go into that summer slump and regression. I want you to continue to read, and I want you to continue to do your math so that you're going to be fresh for next year. To the teachers and the sponsors here this evening, wow, great job. The enthusiasm is absolutely just real and palpable, and I'm just so pleased with the energy that we have focused around our math program and the work. And again, SMECO, thank you for your partnership and the work that's done. Give everybody a round of applause, particularly SMECO as well.
This is the St. Mary's County Science Fair. Mr. Jason Hayes and Dr. Materano. Mr. Jason Hayes and Dr. Madarano.
Good evening, Board of Ed, good evening, Dr. Madarano, hope everyone is doing well. St. Mary's County Public Schools held their Science and Engineering Fair on Saturday, February 1st, at Great Mills High School. Many winners from that fair went on to compete in the 66th Annual Prince George's Area Science and Engineering Fair, which was held on April 5th and 6th at Charles Herbert Flowers High School in Springdale, Maryland. Participation in the Prince George's Fair was open to students from St. Mary's, Calvert, and Prince George's Counties, totaling approximately 600 students. St. Mary's County Public Schools entered 52 projects in the Prince George's Fair, 25 projects in the Junior Division, and 27 in the Senior Division. Tonight is my pleasure that we recognize those students who placed first, second, or third in their categories at the Prince George's County Science Fair, as well as the grand prize winners for both the Junior and Senior Divisions. As a side note, the first-place winners from both categories have their projects currently on display out in the lobby. When you get a chance, when there's a break, I encourage you to go out there and check them out, they are very, very high-quality, very good, very good work. Students, when I call your name, please come up to the front, walking the red carpet, and be recognized. We will start with the Junior Division. In the Animal Sciences category, St. Mary's County Public Schools had a first-place winner, Allison Russell, and her project, A Worm's Life. In the Behavioral and Social Sciences category, we had a second-place winner, Anna Stevenson, and I love the title of her project, Multitasking, I Can Barely Do One Thing at a Time. In Computer Science, we had a first-place winner, Jim Toledo, and his project, Pseudo-Random In the Energy and Transportation category, St. Mary's County Public Schools brought home Second Place, Mr. Daniel McLawhorn, and his project, Direction Versus Direction, Time In the Electrical and Mechanical Engineering category, we had a first and a third-place winner. First place went to Alexander Motamed, and his project, Harnessing the Power of Waves. Third place in that category went to Ms. Sierra Rodriguez Gonzalez, The Birdcage Filtration In the Materials and Bioengineering category, we had a second-place winner, Emily Imhoff, for her project, Let's Make Homes Tornado Safe. In Mathematical Sciences, we had a first-place winner, Ms. Maryann Bullier, and I don't see her here unfortunately, she won for her project, Fractalception, The Art of Randomness. Also in the Mathematical Sciences category, we had a second-place winner, Samantha Chan, and her project, Chain of Pappus. In the Physics and Astronomy category, we had a first-place winner, Olivia Sawa, and her project, Fright Light. For the Prince George's County Fair, there were two Junior Grand Prize winners, and St. Mary's County Public Schools brought home both places. Grand Award winners, Olivia Sawa. Both of the Grand Award winners were from St. Mary's County. And those winners are Olivia Sawa and Jim Toledo. Now moving on to the Senior Division Category Awards. Chemistry, we brought home First Place, Sarita Lee, and her project, Toxic Perfumes. In Computer Science, we brought home a Third Place, Annie Imhoff, The Perfect Pantry. In Energy and Transportation, St. Mary's County Public Schools brought home Second Place, Varun Kataria, The Dawn of Power. In the Electrical and Mechanical Engineering category, we had a Second Place winner, Mr. Michael Dalgetty, Riding the Waves. In the Materials and Bioengineering category, Third Place went to Jonathan Yu, and his project, In the Environmental Sciences category, St. Mary's County Public Schools won Third Place, Virginia Dietrich, and her project, Fertilizer Runoff. First place in the Mathematical Sciences category for the Senior Division went to Robert Vandergriff, and his project, The Hoffman Shuffle. In Microbiology, we brought home Third Place, Ms. Elizabeth Coughlin, The Effect of Oxygen At this time, I would like to recognize those Science Fair winners who could not be here tonight. In the Junior Division for Animal Sciences, Second Place went to Finnegan O'Neill, and his project, Mealworms Electromagnetically Radiant. Energy and Transportation, First Place, Garrick Toman, Speedy SUV. And Microbiology, Third Place, Zach Krotchak, Protect Your Eyes. Round of applause for them. In the Senior Division, in the Animal Sciences category, we had a Third Place winner, Emily Lewin, Do Chickens Have a Favorite Color? In Behavioral and Social Sciences, Second Place went to Quinn Alzheimer, Dangerous Distraction. Environmental Management, we had a First Place winner, Hannah Zimmerman, To Herb or Not to Herb. Microbiology, First Place, Emma Gilligan, Attack on Bacteria in Well Water. And lastly, in the Electrical and Mechanical Engineering category, First Place went to Mina Fami, Development of a Tele-Operation Robot. It is also worth noting that at the Prince George's Fair, Mina Fami was the number-one grand prize winner in the Senior Division, so congratulations to him. Also, in reference to Mina, because he was one of the grand prize winners, he competed in the International Intel Science and Engineering Fair that was held in Los Angeles, California, the week of May 11th and 16th. He brought home one of the Third Place finishes in the Electrical and Mechanical Engineering Categories. So again, congratulations to him. Thank you.
Give Mr. Hayes a round of applause as well, our Science Supervisor. Students, if I could just ask you to take a step back, I can't see the board right now, you've got them covered there pretty good. So, Board Members, I tell these young people, I know many of them personally, and I've watched them grow up, and I'm well aware of the quality of their work, and as I've shared with all of you, in my prior life, before being a superintendent, I worked in several different school districts in the state of Maryland, and I've started my profession as a science and math teacher, starting turning young minds on to problem-solving, stating a hypothesis, and always looking at the world different in terms of possibilities. And so as I think about your advancement through the school system and your outstanding projects, the caliber of which you are operating under is just phenomenal, in terms of the research that you're doing, the work that you're doing, and the problem-solving approaches of which you've come about. Truly those 21st-century learning skills, to teach young people to be critical thinkers and problem solvers. So I'm so proud of you in that sense. I know Mina could not be here tonight, one of my colleagues from another county was in LA as he was out there, and unbeknownst to him, was interacting with Mina, and sent me this wonderful email about the interaction that he had with him in LA. So no matter where our young people go, no matter where you've taken us, and all the different representations, you make us proud, your intellect speaks for itself, but your character speaks just as high. And so for that, we're extremely proud of you, here to support you as you advance, and we guarantee you, we're going to be reading about you in the future, as you're going to be setting the world on fire with all kinds of Nobel Awards that you're going to be winning, all kinds of research that you're going to be setting the world on fire with, as well as cures for everything out there. I just know it, I have so much hope with our young people because of the quality of the individuals such as you. To our parents, thank you for the work that you do with your children, the support that you provide them, taking full advantage of the educational experience and providing those additional opportunities for them. This is the result of that hard work, and the bottom line is, they're just great kids, they're just great kids. And so our teachers are here, we have a number of our teachers here as well, if our teachers are here, please stand up if you would, I know two of them are right there, if you would, two of them, they love when I do this. Give them a round of applause if you would. So, if we could, I just really, I'm reluctant to say this at this time of the year, because you know, our graduations are tomorrow night, and I don't want any of those thunder clouds to be in here, but the heck with it. Give them a thunderous round of applause if you would. Seems like every time I say that, a rainstorm comes. So now, our biggest part, biggest challenge is to do what So Peter Windmeyer, come on up here with me. Let me make you feel the full emotional experience of this recognition. So Board Members, first of all, I've got this, they did this, this is your Board Members, we did all this for you, by the way. Said he liked the colors, goes along with his school. So we have several things here this evening. So, Board Members, I know that you can very clearly speak, very clearly about this young man, as well as I can. I've known Peter for a number of years, in terms of his work that he's done at the Forest Center, his reputation speaks for himself at Chopticon High School. You know, I'm impressed by a variety of different issues, and it goes without question that what impresses me the most, and I've said it several times this evening, about our young people, is the fact that they're so brilliant, so smart, but yet they all have such highly-developed character, and traits of just being good and decent people. Peter impressed me early on, when he became selected as the Student Board Member, and we sat down and had some conversation, and talked about how we could make a bigger impact regarding being a Student Board Member. And Sarita is here as well, and we had some conversation with her this past week, and I know you've provided the mentoring to him as well. And what we talked about was what's, what was most important to Peter was the fact that he wanted to really focus in on anti-bullying. And goodness gracious, we know in this day and age, that we need to put more attention on that, and eradicate bullying from all facets of our community and our school system. And it's a learned behavior, it's oftentimes a reflection of the individual, more so than the individual who is being bullied. And there's so much psychological dynamics associated with the whole process of bullying, and we've done lots of great initiatives in our school district to eradicate, but we also know that it's something that we have to work on every day. It's alive and well in our community, it's alive and well in our school system, and we need to understand what we do when that occurs, and how we, in the literature, talk about breaking the cycle, breaking the cycle of bullying, and confronting it the appropriate way, because it causes great harm. Words can do great harm to individuals, and Peter has taken that on as an anti-bullying message throughout the entire year. I think Mike Wyant is here as well, back in the room, and he's our Director of Safety and Security, and Dr. Charles Ridgell, our Director of Student Services, all the individuals who work with us throughout have really put a strong emphasis on anti-bullying. And we recognize the platform of which you've had this year, that every board meeting, he's talked about anti-bullying. He's talked about the significance of that issue, and the pain that it can cause individuals, and why people do it. He has me tweeting out messages about it, and he retweets them, we're Partners in Crime on Twitter, I can count on him retweeting all of my messages, and we do that because we reach a large group of individuals, to let them know that we don't want individuals suffering in silence, as we've talked about, we want individuals to be equipped with the skills to combat bullying, and he's taken that on as his personal message, recognizing that he'd had some personal experiences with this as a young child as well. And I'm very proud that he's elevated the standard of the Student Board Member for all of you. He has truly represented the students of this school district, he has taken surveys, he has polled his students at all three schools, and Sarita, I'm talking to you at the same time, he's really set the bar high, in that sense, and I know that you and I had some conversation the other night in our student forum regarding drug use, and what we need to do is our community to rally more, and I'm really impressed the fact that you're going to take that on and carry those kind of same messages about statistics, because we recognize bullying, students who engage in drugs, and do a lot of other kind of issues, we need to break that cycle, we need to educate. So I'm so proud of him, because this was more than a resume builder, this was more than just something he was going to put on an application, and then move on and forget about us. Peter is somebody who has a heart of gold, and the other thing, you know me well, and I'm a student of people, I observe constantly, I'm always looking at our students and our staff, and I've watched him in action, quite smooth, I might add, you know, you're really highly-developed interpersonal skills, you speak, your speaking skills in terms of the way that you are able to come across in a presentation are years beyond your age, in that sense. And there's an expression that Jodi Blanco used when she was here creating a message, she talked about ancient children, an ancient child, and an ancient child is someone who is actually older than their years in terms of chronological age. I refer to you in many ways as an ancient child, and I give you that as a gift to me tonight, to you, as a compliment, because you are so mature, you are just so caring, and you're very perceptive about your fellow persons in your life, and you do everything that you can to assist people and build them up and not tear them down. So I've also watched, when Peter's been introduced on, you know, a number of different events, he's a rock star, he's an absolute rock star in our community, he's been on the cover of magazines and newspapers, people lining up to get his autograph, and when he's introduced, his students are just like hooping and hollering, you know, for him, they truly, a real testament to the success of who you are as a person, is conveyed by how you treat others, and obviously they in turn have responded well. So we can talk forever, and we want to give this due justice tonight, and let the Board Members continue to talk as well, about the contributions you've made to our school system. I'm a better person for having known you, watched you in action, and my hope is that, you know, you will continue to set the world on fire with your highly-developed skills. You've just been so kind and so wonderful with all of us. So tonight, on behalf of the Board, we're going to, they're going to talk as well, we want to make certain that, one, we give you this wonderful certificate, that we want you to put out there, and tweet that, take a picture of it, and send it out to everybody. So we congratulate you on that, that's first of all. Second, a few years ago, our Board Second, a few years ago, our Board established a scholarship fund for our student Board member. This is something that occurs in all the school districts in the state of Maryland and we have for you a check tonight, well, it's really not a check, it's a mock-up of a check, this will not fit in an ATM machine, so don't try. That is for $500, that is a scholarship that we will apply to your college education to help you offset the cost of that because we know the cost of that today are just great. So, we want you to have that as well and we're very pleased to do that. And then, this is something here, I'm not quite sure what's in there, I do know, but I want you to open that in front of all of us as well. This is a gift from the Board of Education, from everybody there as well. And then, we'll let the Board members speak and then we'll let you have a moment as well.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, rock star, show them. I mean, that's a great way to describe him, he's an absolute rock star and what that is, is a picture of him on the magazine as well as then a message from all of the current Board members who have worked with you so closely this year and that is something that we want you to cherish as well. We apologize if that's in blue, we didn't, because we were concerned about the ink, we didn't put that in red, but we are so proud of you. Board members, let me turn it to you to say a few words and then we'll have Peter address us as well.
Yeah. Peter, just tell everybody what your plans are.
I plan on going to University of Maryland Eastern Shore, oh, sorry. I plan on going to the University of Maryland Eastern Shore for four years to study hotel and restaurant management.
Hotel and restaurant management?
Yes, sir. Picking up from my three-year program I took at the Tech Center as well, for my career pathway.
Excellent. Make sure now, when you graduate, you get your first job, you tell everybody where you work and so we can come up and visit.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Allen? Yes, the family members here as well. Oh, okay. Introduce who's here with you.
It's my father, mother, grandfather and guest Sydney.
Yes, wonderful. We know you're proud. Go ahead.
Mrs. Allen, go ahead.
It is never easy to be the student Board member, to sit up here and to absorb the amount of information that comes to the Board and then to be able to talk about it in a way that makes sense, not only to the community but to the students as well, is a real gift and you have served in this capacity so extremely well this past year. It is an absolute honor to have been able to serve with you and to watch you grow over the course of this year. You clearly have a wonderful future ahead of you and I'm so glad that we have had this chance this year to spend this time with you. Thank you for all that you've done for this Board and, and for the students across St. Mary's County. You've been just an extraordinary Board member, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Enthusiastic.
Enthusiastic.
Mary?
It's been a tremendous pleasure to work with you, Peter. You're very intelligent, articulate, you're benevolent and you are very professional. I know you will do great things and I hope you stay in touch with us. We will miss you and you have a bright future ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Wow, Peter, everybody's leaning on so thick, I don't want your head to swell up too much. But you are an absolute gentleman and the way you've handled yourself on this Board is, is spectacular. We all expect great things and you just have to keep us in the loop all the time. We'll be following you, we're going to be watching close too. So, thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
This is Cross.
Yes, I spoke about, oh, you can never unadventise to say about Peter. I was telling about, you know, your DAR Award and your James Egg Forest Award and you might not, you probably don't even know this, that it came, there's an article that came with that picture and the news reporter called me and she asked me for a few words and I went through all the board minutes because there were so many things about you, I couldn't remember all the things about you because you've just done so much in leadership and character and school and all your different things and you're such a wonderful young man and I hope you invite us all to your college, we'll all come for lunch, we'll pay. Peter, thank you so much and Dr., no, wait a minute, Dr. Marterano can pay. Thank you, honey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Peter, we're going to miss you, a lot of things have been saved. We wish you the best. I know you will succeed in any endeavor you pursue and you have a great life ahead of you and just take advantage of everything that's out there that you can possibly need. It's just there for the asking and you have the intelligence and the know-how to do all that and if anything you ever need, this Board is here. You know all of us, only thing you have to do is pick up the phone or drop us a line and you can always be in touch with Dr. Marterano and we will come and help you, so don't hesitate. That's what we're here for. We help everybody, okay, and that's what our job is. Just because you graduate and leave doesn't mean that we're going away. We will be here. Parents, same thing, we could be of any help.
They raised you good.
Please feel free to contact any of us on this Board. Okay, Dr. Marterano, it's time to take some interesting pictures.
People want to say a couple more things.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Asper and the rest of the Board. It's only a couple of times I've ever been lost for words, honestly, especially in the last, in the last year. Thank all of you, really, on the last year has been truly amazing for me. It's a great way to, this last week really, this last month and season, the whole year, I'll say that, it's been such a great learning experience for me, honestly. I've learned so much from all of you, individual skills, especially when it comes to my public speaking skills as well. I remember the beginning of my term when I started, I kind of listened in to all of what you had to say, all your different speaking styles and the way you conducted yourselves and what you said and honestly, I'm going to admit it now, I kind of stole a little piece of everything from each of you as I went along and tried to improve myself, my own public speaking skills and as well as my own leadership, the way I conducted myself, my own professionalism as well. And it's just, Ms. Battle as well, thank you. You've been such a great help to me as well. Ms. Williams, you've always been there for me too at the Tech Center as well. Mr. Corns, also a big helper in my bullying initiative, always helping with my, the technology I needed as well. And my parents, my support team that's here too today, I thank you very much for all your help and support over the last year and 18 years that I've been around. So, thank you, everyone and I actually have some things for you not to repeat what's already been given today.
Autograph picture.
Did you autograph? Oh, you sure did.
I was going to say, I have to confess, I grabbed two of them to make sure I wouldn't miss. Thank you. I love it, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That is wonderful.
That's all right, go ahead.
With that, they, when the article was published, I got a lot of people asking me for a couple of issues and I definitely want to make sure you guys got some. So, thank you all for your support and help in this last year. I've learned so much and I thought I'd take it to college with me. As far as my anti-bullying initiative, actually I've just realized when I did some research at my college, the University of Maryland Eastern Shore actually has an anti-bullying initiative program at this campus. That's been, it's actually a bit newer, it's been in effect for the last four years and they actually now, next year, are going to be having a student committee against anti-bullying. So, it continues and it's going to live on and I'm going to bring it throughout my college years and then back in adult life. And I will not disappear in the county as well, I plan on coming back after college and...
I'm going to work on changing your major. You're a politician in there to broaden your... There's a lot of opportunity for you. So, we are going to miss you. Board members, I've just been presented the best gift possible from a student. I've just been informed, I think this is a good gift, that at the Chopticon graduation, Peter's been selected to introduce me at the graduation during that and so, he's already put me on notice, he's done his research in terms of the speech last year and I'm nervous. So, just, and if you hear, parents, I need your help, if you hear any remote possibility that he's found my high school yearbook picture and he's going to display it, there will be consideration that I can be issued his diploma. So, we are so proud of him and I know you are as well. Thank you for sharing him with us this year and now, let's move on to get a picture. Give him a round of applause as we move into the next... Oh, sure, he wants to keep talking, so go ahead.
Just one quick word, the next student Board member, thank you for actually staying here. Sarita Lee, if you'd stand up really quick, just one more time, so, in the process of becoming student Member of Board of Education, it's actually a very long and rigorous process. They don't just let anyone come and sit in the chair. And this year, it's actually a three-step process and when we got the application, one of the steps to become student Member is you have a interview with the Executive Board of St., of the St. Mary's County Association of Student Councils, which is myself and other officers in the county. And my part in the election was to ask the person who's being interviewed a question, a very, very hard question, we call it a wacky personality question. And the point of that is to throw them off their guard and really make them really think about the question, think about it hard and to kind of see what they do under pressure. And before the interview, I, I came up, I thought about a few days and I thought, okay, I have a great one, I have a curve ball, I want to really make her think. And I was surprised because when I was thinking of this question, I was thinking, what question could I ask that's a question I wouldn't be able to answer myself? And I came in, she interviewed, she interviewed, did a wonderful job and I asked her the question, thinking and hoping that, you know, I'm going to throw off her game and see what, make her think. I asked her the question and I received a brilliant and almost immediate response and that left me kind of startled, kind of shocked, honestly, and I was so, I was really shocked because I was like, I wouldn't have been able to answer that myself. And listening to you speak in the public, in the community as well and your own professionalism, you're going to do an amazing job on the Board as well and worth your platform against anti, excuse me, against student drug abuse for next year, you're going to thrive in that as well. So, thank you, Ms. Lee.
You have some of your family members here as well? You have some of your family members here?
Oh, yes, my dad, my grandparents and all of my brothers here for Boy Scouts.
And your mom was here a little earlier too, I saw her.
Yeah, she had their run.
Yeah, all good friends and we're just so thrilled. And Mr. Kevin Wright back there as well.
Yes.
You know him as well, you want to introduce him?
Definitely. In the back, if you, I'd like to stand up also, Mr. Kevin Wright, he is our, for the Southern Maryland Association of Student Councils here, he's our supervisor for the entire program and he's also been a big mentor and a big push for me to join, to join not just the Association of Student Councils but also be in the position of student Member. And he's the one who coordinates the elections, who coordinates the SMOB elections as well for our position and you've been just an amazing help to not just me but all the other officers that we've had come through and the student members that we've had come through as well. So, thank you so much for that as well.
So, picture, good. Here, come on in, we're in the center and anchor this if you would.
Time.
I can't take care of everybody.
Madam Secretary, there's no public hearing this evening, no public comments, is that correct?
No public comments.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to action items, first action item this evening is the proposed special education staffing plan for FY 2014-15. Ms. Charbonnet. Good evening.
I presented to you at the last Board meeting as an information item, the staffing plan and tonight, I'm here to share with you that I have not received any additional community comments other than what I had shared with you at the last meeting, so I ask that you approve the plan.
Comments, questions of Mrs. Charbonnet? Mrs. Allen, who's over you?
You have reassured us that despite the budget challenges we are facing, that we are able to carry out the staffing plan as presented. I think you've done an excellent job of trying to make sure that this is not done just by formula but rather with, I think there's, Superintendent often says, there's a science to things but there's also an art to things and, and making certain that we both adhere to the letter of the law as well as the spirit of the law in terms of making certain that what we offer students with special needs meets both the law but also their needs as well and, and that's not a cookie cutter approach. It really is a challenge and in many cases and over the years, the, the scope of the plan as well as the challenges faced by our students have, have grown immensely and I think you've done a great job of making certain that this plan addresses those needs.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matthews?
Thank you for all your hard work, no questions.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cross?
You did a great job with the staffing plan, giving, well, even when there are limited resources with the special ed laws, we must go ahead with them and you do a real nice job with that. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Peter?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Board members, this is action item, we need a motion.
I move.
I move that the Board of Education approve the special education staffing plan for school year 2014-2015 as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Mrs. Charbonnet, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Charbonnet. Board members, if I may, Dr. Asper?
Yes, go right in.
The, we, we spend a lot of very detailed time vetting our presentations for all of you in preparation for this and again, I appreciate your comments regarding scientifically but also done artfully in that sense. Ms. Charbonnet's last PowerPoint that she presented to you, I think that's one that you want to just pull aside and make sure that you have that handy for you so that you can refer to. There's a lot of really good information in that overall PowerPoint regarding how we administer staffing, some of the creative venues of which you've operated under and I was exceptionally pleased this year, recognizing the budgetary challenges that we've been confronted with, that the recognition as we open up the school year for next year, that all the young people will be serviced at the level which is necessary. So, I commend you and to, not just to you but your entire staff as you know. So, thank you very much and Board members, I wanted to make that point to you too.
Thank you.
Next action item is the contract award for chiller replacement at Margaret Brent Middle School. Mr. Harvard?
Good evening, board members. As you know, the fiscal year 2015 capital improvement budget included funding for the replacement of a chiller at Margaret Brent Middle School. There are actually two large chillers at Margaret Brent Middle School. There's a certain amount of redundancy in these systems. One of those units has been an ongoing maintenance issue, and the Department of Maintenance, I know, has communicated with you on a number of occasions, keeping you abreast of those developments. Mr. Witten, the Director of Maintenance, is here with me tonight. So, if you have technical questions, Mr. Witten's available. We also worked very closely with Mr. Witten on preparing the bid documents for the procurement. The project is essentially a one-to-one replacement of one of the existing chillers. It's basically going to be replaced with the latest iteration of that particular model. So, the new machine really matches the performance and the dimensions of the existing chillers. So, there's not a lot of modification work as part of this project. We advertised this project on eMaryland Marketplace on April 1st, 2014. We had eight firms pick up plans and specifications for the project, and six contractors submitted bids on April 25th, 2014. I'd like to talk a bit about the bid from the Carrier Corporation. That bid was defective in a number of ways. Three major elements were defective. The first was that we had three addenda as part of the, during the bidding period, and a number of those had financial implications. Carrier Corporation did not acknowledge any of those addenda was their bid. The second was that we require a letter of surety that basically says that the surety will provide performance and labor payment bond if that bidder is awarded the contract. Carrier Corporation did not provide that letter. And then, thirdly, this bid was really submitted by the service organization for Carrier. With their bid, they submitted some of their standard terms and conditions, and those terms and conditions were contrary to a number of our own terms and conditions. So, with that being said, I think we really have to say that these are material defects that cannot be cured, and therefore have to say that the bid of the Carrier Corporation is non-responsive. The second loan bid was submitted by American Combustion Industries, was a bid of $189,750. They had a spread of about 7% with WL Gary Company, comparable company to American Combustion. American Combustion Industries, Inc. has, they were founded in 1976, they've been around a long time. They're a very well-known firm to me, and they're a very well-known firm to Mr. Witten as well. They've performed a number of projects for educational systems, higher education, Montgomery County, Calvert County Public Schools. I worked with them at St. Mary's College in Maryland. They have a bonding capacity of about $15 million. Their surety is strong in every other aspect. Their bid was conforming. So, with that being said, we have a pretty, we have a sufficient budget on this project. There were no alternates, so it was a base bid of $189,750. We would ask for a construction contingency of $25,000, and that will leave a sizable balance at this time of about $114,000. So, with that being said, we, our recommendation is to award the contract to American Combustion, Inc., and ask your authorization for the $25,000 construction contingency.
Mr. Harvard, what's the age of that chiller that needs replacing? Just out of curiosity?
I think we opened the school 2006, and it has been an ongoing problem.
Yeah. Well, once they start giving problems, it's time to replace them. Yes, absolutely. Okay, board members, questions, comments? Peter?
No questions, but thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Who made the one that gave us problems?
Well, both of the units there are Carrier units.
Yes.
Manufactured by Carrier.
Yeah, I have a Carrier. Not all Carrier's good. Oh, thank you. Yes, very good.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
The newer unit, I mean, it's an exact pop-in, but is it a little more efficient?
It is a little more efficient, actually. And it's a little more efficient on the partial loads, which is really critical. The current machine has a SEER rating of about nine, fully loaded, and then partially loaded probably in a 12 to 13. This is, I think, 11 SEER full capacity, but close to 18 on the partial load.
Thank you. Good job.
Mrs. Warren?
Shouldn't the chiller last, I mean, it hasn't been 10 years yet.
Yeah.
And we had to replace the chiller. Is Carrier responsible for any warranty on that chiller? It's not 10 years old yet.
Yep. The compressors had a warranty of five years. We have exceeded the compressors. I think they did replace one compressor under warranty. And this is a condition where, actually, let Mr. Witten explain what the technical issue is.
During its first year of operation, according to the logs, I wasn't here to experience it, but there was a waterside rupture. So, basically, water got into the refrigerant, the oil side of the chiller. And ever since then, the chiller has caused problems over and over again. And just recently during, two years ago now, I requested a new compressor. The compressor had failed, an acid issue, acid gets into the lines, it destroys it. So, when we went in to replace the compressor, we also had a test done, called an eddy current test on the tubes. And that tells us whether the condition of the tubes. The eddy current test came back extremely bad. And then, a lot of the tubes had corroded on the inside. And come to find out after that, with the new refrigerants and the new synthetic oils, there was a chemical reaction between a chemical and the water we used to keep from freezing pipes inside the school and the synthetic oil inside the chiller. So, basically, the side of the tubes that we couldn't see, on the refrigerant side, from the eddy current test, we could tell that they were wired, what they call wire drawn. Imagine a spider web, laying a web down on the outside of a tube, and everywhere he did, it ate through it a little bit. So, we couldn't, we couldn't replace the tubes. We had exceeded the amount of tubes that we could cap and no longer use. And if you took the amount of money that it cost to replace the compressor, plus the amount of money to replace that entire section where the tubes were, you well exceeded or came right up to that value. The other chiller, on the other hand, hasn't given us any problems at all. We've had to put maybe a couple hundred dollars worth of refrigerant in it, change the oil in typical maintenance. So, and they are both exactly the same. Any more questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
The life of most of our chillers is 25 to 30 years.
Right.
It is.
That was a question that was raised during the vetting process of bringing this forward. I mean, it's eight years old. I mean, you'd think, my goodness.
It is extremely young.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so thank you for explaining that. We had the same questions.
Mrs. Allen?
The majority of my questions have been asked, but, you know, I'd also like to understand if, if this came about likely because of that initial rupture. Was that, was the rupture a fault of the equipment? Or was that a fault of something that the school system did or didn't do? That may not be, you know, because you weren't there, then, you know, it's probably a hard question to answer, but, I mean, that, you know, certainly comes to mind because if it was a function of, a malfunction of the equipment, that the equipment somehow was defective, then presumably we have some sort of recourse, as long as we have it all documented. And so, I would like to see us pursue that to the extent possible. And, and given that you say that part of this came about as a result of the water we're using to, to ensure that the pipes don't freeze, if we're utilizing that method with this chiller, one would think we were with the other chiller, any thoughts on what the?
We've abandoned, we've abandoned glycol. Glycol was the chemical inside the chiller, the water side, for freezing. What we've done is we've had valves installed in a different section of the building so we can drain more water out of the system. Therefore, we won't need glycol anymore.
Okay.
That was one question. Unfortunately, I wasn't here. According to the logs, it was a, at the time, it was seen as a normal failure. Equipment, unfortunately, and I, during my, my presentation on the maintenance, I have a graph that I have in there that shows that your failure is most likely during the first 7% to 8% of a life and during the last 4% or 5% of a life. And unfortunately, these failures started happening within that range, too. This is extremely unfortunate. And I will go back and make sure every avenue was pursued. I would like to assure you that I've already done that, and I believe I have, but this, I've been chasing this chiller for, and its problems for quite a few years, so I really can't recollect off the top of my head. But I'm, I'm confident that I did. I would like to be able to assure you, and I can't do that right now.
Bring us some more, because it's just disconcerting. I mean, I think we're all saying the same thing for the redundancy sake, that you buy equipment with the expectation that things are going to last. So, when, I think the question was asked, what is the normal life expectancy of that? And I think you said, what, 25 to 30 years in that sense? And here we are, eight years later, you know, and we recognize the malfunction, but then the aspect of warranties, the equivalency of a lemon law, and a variety of other things that may kick in for that, too. Pursuing all those levels of recourse. It's just, I mean, I had the same reaction when all this was being vetted internally. And, you know, it's one of those issues in terms of no fault, but the aspect is extremely disappointing and disconcerting considering we all sat there not too long ago and did the opening of that school in terms of the renovation process in 2006. So, we, we're just always looking for ways to be, you know, to follow the board's aspect of efficient and effective use of resources, and then these things come along and how we can prevent that. Again, no fault intended, but it's just out of the norm with it. And, you know, it begs the question in terms of the quality of manufacturing, you know, and a variety of other things, you know, and what the rating is long-term. And I'm not going to pass judgment in terms of the manufacturer at this moment in time, but always keeping an eye to the aspects of which ones have, you know, the longer life expectancy, because we're trying to carry these things forward for many, many years to come. And this is outside of the norms, knowing some of the equipment that we have in the schools that have been there for 30, 40, 50 years, you know, and you're, and you're, didn't you say, Steve, that we had some pieces of equipment that are sold, that we can't buy the replacement equipment anymore, that we have to have them manufactured by the Amish?
Yeah.
Remember that conversation?
I do, but actually, you all in the process of renovating that last building.
Yeah, exactly. And that's the one.
It was Leonard Town Middle and Spring Ridge.
Spring Ridge.
Quite often had to have the Amish step in and actually manufacture.
And machine the.
Because you can't buy it anymore.
And I certainly did not mean to suggest that you had not pursued every avenue. It's, I think the questions we all try to ask are those that any, any individual in the community looking at something might wonder about, and hence my questions. And I then would just also like to reflect that this is, once again, an item for our capital budget rather than our operating budget. And so, as we propose to spend these monies in order to replace this chiller, it's not coming from the operating budget, though it will, with a higher SEER rating, should have a positive impact on utility usage and therefore our budgets.
If I might, I'd like to make one comment to follow up on what Dr. Monorana was saying. Mr. Witten and I have worked together probably six years now, and one of the things we have really concentrated on is how we deal with completing a project, turning it over for warranty, and then following up with the contractors and documenting those issues early on so you understand, is this, is this a trend? Is this, is this a manufacturer defect? Do we need more training? I mean, there are lots of variables here, and I think we have really worked hard to improve our processes. So, hopefully, you know, down the road, this, you know, this will not happen again.
And, you know, you've each made a number of presentations before us that speak to the process that you have in place. So, you know, I'm certainly comfortable with that process and appreciate that you, you have put it into place to make sure that it's well documented and that we're covering all of our bases. So, thank you very much.
Well, is it the pleasure of the board to table this item?
No.
For the next meeting?
No, no, no. That's something separate. That would be separate to see, no, not to table it, to move forward with it because they need it. But is there any recourse? Because it didn't last 10 years, like the superintendent say, maybe the lemon law or something else that maybe we could get reimbursed or some, the lawyer, the attorney is shaking his head, no.
Yeah. I was just using. Is there something equivalent?
Oh, but gee, for $329,000.
This is commercial equipment, too.
You would think it would have lasted at least 10 years.
Outside that five-year warranty.
It's sad.
It is.
Obviously, is there something equivalent, like the, you know, the lemon law, recognition, all those things? But it's sad in terms of the manufacturing quality. I mean, I think we've hit this pretty hard in terms of expressing our dissatisfaction. And I just want to add, I think that it's, it is a few more years, but not a whole lot. It's pushing the 10 years. It was in place when you came to the school system, so it's about 10 years. And early on, I know Steve's predecessor dealt with it, trying to keep up with where it's at. I would pursue the replacement because we need to get it in place, and then if there's any way to proceed, we would move that way. So, yeah.
Yeah.
I was not suggesting that we hold that.
Well, I just, you know, heard some negative things, so I just thought maybe, is that where we were headed?
We were trying to be effective and efficient.
So, I thought I would just throw it out there, that's all.
Right. Trying to be effective and efficient with our resources.
No, I don't think so.
I don't know.
Dr. Monorana, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I've expressed my concern, and that's been through the vetting process internally, and so that's where we are at this moment with the recommendations. So, I support this.
Okay. All right.
Before we make the motion, I have a question there. Do we have to say that Carrier was defective in several ways?
Was it non-responsive then?
Yeah, if you could incorporate that into the motion, that would be terrific, to say that the board rejects a bid of Carrier Corporation as non-responsive.
Okay. Board members, we need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education reject the bid by Carrier Corporation as being non-responsive, and that the Board of Education approve the contract award for the replacement chiller at Margaret Brent Middle School to American Combustion Industries Incorporated in the amount of $189,750, and further approves a construction contingency for the project of $25,000.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvard, just go on to the next one. Contract award for installation of modular units at Spring Ridge Middle School.
Yeah, board members, this action item is for the relocation and installation of two state-owned four-classroom units and one locally-owned restroom unit from the Loveville Annex to Spring Ridge Middle School. This is obviously in support of the limited renovation in addition at Spring Ridge Middle School, which will start this summer. The scope of the project includes moving the units, installation of foundations, construction of walkways and ramps, and connection to site utilities. As part of the project, they'll be connecting the modular units to the building's main fire alarm system and PA system. The project was advertised on eMaryland Marketplace on April 25th, 2014. Three firms purchased the plans and specifications. Two contractors submitted bids on May, May 13th, 2014. You see those two bidders, JL Services and Blazer Enterprises, both firms well-known to us. J&amp;L Services submitted the lowest base bid of approximately $220,000. There's about a 20% spread between J&amp;L Services and Blazer Enterprises. I mean, that's not, honestly, that's not uncommon in these relocatable projects. Back in 2011, we awarded a contract to J&amp;L Services, and they were 20% less than Blazer at that point. It's really just a function of their workload primarily, and how they perceive the, how they perceive the work. We have a sizable budget for this project of just over $616,000. That allows us to pursue a number of. a number of the add alternates. We had six, uh, add alternates as part of this procurement. The six alternates, uh, were replacing the HVAC C systems and the state-owned units. Uh, those units are probably well over thirty years old, and I think the units are primarily, uh, uh, original to the unit. Uh, we wanna go in and replace all the acoustical ceilings in those state un- state-owned units, um, and with that, replace all the interior lighting fixtures. Those lighting fixtures are, again, pretty, uh, pretty old fluorescent fixtures, pretty inefficient. We wanna go through, and the exterior lighting fixtures on the, on those units have been damaged over the years, so we wanna go through and rewire those and, uh, upgrade those so they're more energy-efficient. Um, and also as part of this project, we're starting to kind of, uh, dismantle, as it were, the, the Loveville Annex, and so we really wanna start cleaning that up. So, part of the, uh, project will be to remove those large, uh, concrete foundations associated with the, uh, state-owned unit. And then finally, uh, we wanna go ahead and paint the exterior of, of these units as well. So that adds about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the project. But again, we have sufficient funds. Uh, we're asking for a construction contingency of thirty-five thousand dollars as part of this. Um, those units will be at Spring Ridge, uh, you know, essentially for two years. Uh, we're looking to, um, do some interior modifications as we go along. STEM will be the first group, uh, in the building, so we're working with them to, to do some modest, uh, modifications there. Uh, once we split the units apart, we'll be able to see really the condition of the roof underneath. Um, uh, and so, we may end up, uh, during this period of time, uh, re-roofing. Uh, we've also created a kind of a, a detail to prolong the, uh, the life of these units by doing some extra welding on the, on the lower beam of these units. Uh, so we'd like to do that before, uh, those units are moved elsewhere. Um, so you can see, we, we, we're looking at probably a number of, um, uh, phased elements to the project down the road, but our interest right now is to get those units down to Spring Ridge. J.N.L. Services is the company that will hit this very hard. Uh, they're using local subs. Uh, we found that, uh, on previous work, uh, they, they do very little in terms of change orders. They're just focused on what they need to do, and they get it done. So based on, on a previous experience, we, we, uh, we know J.N.L. Services, uh, can do this work. They're responsible, uh, and their bid was, again, fully responsive to the bid requirement. Take your questions.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Allen?
When do you anticipate the move will take place?
Um, we, this is a state-funded project.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, uh, after the action of the board tonight, we'll submit to the state, and hopefully, uh, we'll get approval on the next IAC meeting, which is June fourteenth, and then, and then move quickly ahead.
Okay. Um, I, that really is my only question. Um, I, I guess the only other thing I would say is, um, you indicate that you wanna remove the existing footings at the Loveville Annex to clean that area up. What do you anticipate doing with that area, um, you know, i- in the future? Um, as I'm, you know, thinking of those footings being there, um, you, you hope you never have to relocate or, or utilize various facilities, but it does occur to me that if we ever had, you know, heaven forbid, a significant fire in one of our buildings, and we really had to set up and relocate and, and stand up an entire school or a significant portion of a school, you know, where would we do that? And if we don't have the footings, I, you know, just, so I'm just curious to know.
Mrs. Allen, more than likely, those footings would not match up to the next units.
Okay.
Load, you know, they would have to be for that. Um, right now, these units are between, you know, the main walkway and the playground. So what I see is, is removing the foundations, and quite often, we'll remove them below ground, and so that the footing would be there, but maybe not the other.
Mm-hmm.
And some of them are poured completely, so they would be moved. But to, um, remove them and reseed, and it would be used as, right now, uh, possibly for the Head Start program there, or something as a playground and all.
Very good.
I think that's where we'd be moving.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Watson?
No questions, thank you. Very thorough job.
Mr. Matthews?
Good job as usual, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
Very good, and thank you for your work.
Peter?
No questions, but thank you.
Okay, board members, we need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract award for the installation of two state-owned modular units and one restroom unit at Spring Ridge Middle School to J.N.L. Services Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, and further approve a construction contingency for the project of thirty-five thousand dollars.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next action item is land acquisition. Mr. Clements and Ms. Howe.
So, board members, as they are preparing, uh, this is a very exciting presentation. So, we'll let you proceed.
We need some excitement.
Exactly.
Okay.
Like we haven't had enough of that.
Right.
Board members, the, uh, new school sites, as you're very much aware, there is no inventory that the school system has. We've been pursu- pursuing school sites, Mrs. Howe mainly focusing on that in her office area, um, for more than twelve years. And as you know, with Evergreen, we just got the site in time to move that project forward. Uh, Walter Francis Duke, that site was obtained by the county. Uh, they have additional property on that site that, um, could be a middle school, uh, but that property's not in the board's name, and, um, may not be the best location, but it is a site available. Um, throughout this twelve years, um, we've looked at a hundred and ninety properties in the county, and great depth in looking at them. And Mrs. Howe has a whole volume of binders and, and reviews of that. Um, each of those sites have been reviewed against the, uh, Maryland, um, Department of Planning's, uh, site in, in, in the school construction area as far as their cr- criteria. I think it's forty-one components to that. Um, and over the time, um, with the economy very robust at times, um, either we couldn't afford the property or, um, the property owner wasn't interested in selling, so we've not really been, uh, ahead of that. Now, recently, we've been continuing to pursue sites. Uh, tonight, we have a site to bring before you, um, that has the possibility of being multiple school sites or other, uh, public use prob- probably. Um, and what we would need from you tonight is the approval or a letter of intent. That's, uh, April seventeenth with a property owner as amended. Um, we'd also like authorization for staff to negotiate and execute the contract of sale, uh, accordingly, uh, with the terms of the letter of intent. Uh, this is gonna be for the purchase of approximately two hundred and eighty-one acres, and, um, Mrs. Howe is gonna walk through real quickly where it's at, and then, um, what our next steps are. Uh, within this contract, um, it gives a study period. Ms. Howe, I'll talk a bit, minute about that.
As Mr. Clements said, the property is two hundred and eighty-one acres, um, and it is located in the northern portion of the county. If you're familiar with Route two thirty-five heading north, um, it is a directly por- um, adjacent to Flora Corner, Flora Corner Road, which is right here. And if you're familiar with that area when you're going up, it's right in the town of Mechanicsville. So if you're going up, there's that little commercial district, and there, to get your bearings, there's a, a farm off to the right, um, and that will be your, the farm that we are talking about, two hundred and eighty-one acres of property. It's currently known as Multiflora LLC. The next step, um, as we've talked about, is where we would go forward. Um, based on your action tonight, as Mr. Clements said, we need Maryland Department of Planning approval. We have a meeting set up with the Maryland Department of Planning representatives on Thursday. Um, once we do that, we would start that investigation and go through the process. It's forty-one points of criteria that we have to meet for a site to come forward. It talks about the topography and how the land works for being able to be used for a school. It talks about the availability of roads, which is, runs right onto two thirty-five and Flora Corner Road. So it gives us multiple access points. Um, it talks about the availability of sewer, and those are issues that we're going to have to address. Um, it talks about priority funding areas, which we're going to have to address as well. For a school site to move forward, we'll need Maryland Department of Planning approval, as well as the state superintendent approval. Maryland Department of Planning comes first. Based on that meeting, it's an initial review. They'll start to get some direction as to how we move forward. The letter of intent calls for a nine-month feasibility study period. We'll start to do all the site investigation that we need, and hopefully, then we'll be able to move forward with approval process. As Mr. Clements said, we also need contract approval. So this is just the beginning of a long series of stages of process that we would go through. Parcel is, um, made up of two pieces, so if you're looking at it, um, it's currently got one piece down here and another piece up here, so it is currently divided into two parcels.
So if you have any questions, we take those and, um,
Okay.
you know, be moving forward with
Okay.
the letter of intent.
Who saw it, you?
Um, I don't really have a question, but thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Crosby?
Definitely need land and school sites. And for all I know about sites, I'm glad it's off of two thirty-five. Yes, I'm off of two thirty-five, too, and you've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Great job. We're a growing community. We're a growing school system, and this is another way to help us grow. Thank you. Good job.
Mrs. Watson?
Thank you very much. This is a tedious process. You've looked at a hundred and ninety, over a hundred and ninety possible sites, and it has to meet so many requirements in order to be available for a school. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mrs. Allen?
One of the challenges we've faced all along has been not only, um, the suitability of any particular parcel, the willingness of the owner to entertain the idea of selling, but also, um, placement. And, and will that parcel, wherever it is, um, meet our needs either now or in the future? And, uh, as you've brought to us any number of times, the size of parcel that we need, especially for a high school, um, is, is, um, larger than, uh, you know, significantly larger at, at times than an elementary school site. And the, uh, availability of land that meets all the various criteria has proven to be a significant challenge over the years. So, I'm really pleased that this, we're able to pursue this, that the commissioners are supportive of us pursuing this, and, um, as well as the fact that, um, we certainly don't build schools that are extravagant. Um, but the opportunity to have a, a high school especially that is on a main thoroughfare, and to be able for the community to, um, to see that building and know what's going on there, I think is a very positive one, and, and will have lasting significance in the community. So, um, while that is somewhat more happenstance, um, by virtue of, of where the parcel is, it, it still is, I think, a positive for this particular piece. So, I look forward over the coming months to being briefed, um, as the process goes on, and an understanding of, um, any challenges that are on, that will be ongoing, that we're gonna have to address, as well as, um, hopefully, the positives that roll in in terms of, um, overcoming any challenges. So, thank you.
Dr. Monorana?
Yes, Dr. Raspen, board members, I started by stating that this is a very, um, exciting presentation tonight, and I, and I wanna give it its due justice in terms of conversation, in terms of vetting this publicly. Um, if there's one thing consistent during my tenure as superintendent, and it just seems like yesterday that I arrived here, and it's, the conversation has been about securing school sites. It has been a constant conversation with the two individuals at the podium, um, Mr. Clements and Ms. Howe, who've done a, just a tremendous job with this. Those, uh, when they, when they're talking about those a hundred and ninety sites, they're not exaggerating. Uh, we have gone through every possible location. I've learned more things than I ever thought I would dream about in regarding to the issues in terms of what approves a school site, whether it's deep slopes or the development district and water and sewage and a variety of other variables. And then you get this close, and then it gets down to the negotiated pieces in terms of the actual cost of it, and then the usable amount of, uh, land for actually building a school. So, keep that in mind, is what I just said, and then keep in mind the fact that you've adopted a CIP budget that takes us for multiple years into the future. Keep that piece of information, uh, in combination with the information that Ms. Howe presents us in terms of our birth rate and our growth. I mean, we're, we're right now rapidly moving towards eighteen thousand young people. In the next decade, we will see that well over twenty thousand, you know, if that follows through with, with those projections are. And that's real. So what we have to do is keep up with those seats, uh, for those young people, that we have to have a seat available for every young person that's in the school. And that's actually hard data. I mean, when you think about some of the other en- agencies that they make a case for capital facilities, um, they have a whole different set of metrics of which they have to follow. Ours are actual seats in terms of students in those seats and a percentage based upon state capacity and local capacity and things that have to occur. The beautiful thing about this site, it ties right into, so my thought is already down the road programmatically, because when we're thinking about a high school, that's what we're thinking primarily. It takes a larger amount of acreage for that to do, because you have to have the sites available for fields, a variety of other things that have to come into consideration, uh, for, for outdoor, uh, space. But the other piece is, at this property, we think we're gonna go through our charrettes, and we're gonna go through our, uh, design phase. Is it, I, I, in an ideal world, I would like to see my vision for the, for the, the future, uh, development of these schools is a campus concept. Uh, the ability to have an elementary, middle, and high, uh, school on the same site. There are models of that across the state and across the United States, and it lends for just a wonderful level as far as programming, uh, as far as mentoring, uh, any program that we're putting in place, whether it's anti-bullying or whatever, you get that consistent vertical continuation. And it just creates that whole community aspect. I mean, there's things that you can do, uh, in regards to that, and then seeing where the emphasis may be for the community. I've shared with you different parts of the state that, uh, private partnerships have occurred, where they've enhanced the auditoriums, uh, within the school to create a fine arts facility that becomes use for the community in terms of advancement of, of the, the arts in, in that sense. So, all the possibilities exist, so I'm very, very pleased, uh, at this site. Uh, we've been on it. We're gonna take you on it here in the near future again. Uh, you, you know exactly where it is. We've had, been having conversation over the last year regarding this, uh, off and on, and so we're, we're to that level. So it is a very exciting time. But what I, I want you to do, and because this is another facet of our resources, because what people need to understand in our community don't, doesn't, doesn't always understand the different buckets of, uh, monies of which we operate under, and I see your head nods, and you know where I'm going with this, is we have our operating expenses, uh, that when we're talking about today at the commissioners' meeting, our FY fifteen budget was adopted today. That is our operating budgets to run the school system, the staffing, all the needs necessary. That's a different budget in terms of the capital improvement budget of which we operate under, which takes care of all of our facilities, and there's bonding associated with that. There's a variety of things that occur, and that's when I tell you that I'm heading to Annapolis, uh, to make a justification and a presentation, and several of you joined me this year when we, uh, went up to, uh, presented in front of the governor for the allocation of state funding. And that's all figured based upon, formulaically, uh, based upon the percentages of wealth. Uh, the, the, the split is, what, sixty-three, thirty-seven?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four in that level as far as the contributions that the county makes versus the state, and that's all indicated based upon wealth. So, and, and there's, and you can't use one budget to balance out the other one. There's been conversation about taking money from one and putting it into the other one, and there's strict limitations of what dollars you use. So what I want you to do is, in light of all the other conversation about our CIP, our operating budget FY fourteen, then all of the sudden, we are revealing to the community about the purchasing of land. Could you explain to the board, and I know they know that, but I'm doing it for the education process overall, of the availability of funding for this project and where that comes from and where that is?
But for the, um, construction, you're right, it's a split between the, uh, state and the, the local and the county. Uh, the county does have to pro- provide the land, and we have to buy the land ourselves. The state doesn't participate in that. Um, so several years ago, the su- the commissioners in our CIP set money aside, uh, so that when we found land, we could buy it and we wouldn't have to come back. So that funding is there. Um, we recently, um, within the last month, uh, went back to the commissioners because we had money in an hour a year, and I think FY eighteen, to purchase an, an elementary school. money in an hour a year and I think FY18 to purchase an elementary school, which we need to build next. The commissioners in this 2015 CIP, they moved that funding forward so that now we have the funding we had before, we have the additional for the elementary school. Your last meeting, you approved us to move ahead with an offer on an elementary school. Again, this is all funding, as you're saying, that's capital money.
Okay, so what I want the community to understand and our, the taxpayers to understand and obviously the board already understands this, is the bucket of which that remains in is in the capital. That money has already been allocated and has been sitting there in the account anticipating that we would have the flexibility necessary to execute because you can never time these properly. You have to be able to have the funding available to be able to pursue and then be able to act and negotiate a contract. So the dollars are there in that account for the purchase of this land is what I want to make sure that we are understanding.
It's set aside, it's also, some of the funding sources for it is impact fees.
Correct.
So when new houses are sold, the impact fees are paid for parks, roads and schools and that money's set aside for this type of purchasing.
So keep coming with me, let's continue to tell the story, which you just went back forth was in terms of the additional funding that was allocated recently in the CIP and that was a conversation that occurred and we're very thankful for that, that consideration. That will allow us to move forward on an elementary site. So the good news is, I think, the first time in a long time in the history of the school system, we actually have land, there's an expression in the business called banking the land so that you have it for future school sites. We've never had that luxury to have the ideal locations, there's been parcels of land that are associated with other schools, et cetera, but we've never been able to buy in anticipation, we're always sort of running fast and it's allowed us to be able, first of all, we're glad that we have Evergreen, but we knew what the process was with that. That was a whole journey within itself, a story we could tell. The aspect of where the Captain Walter Francis Duke is, is a journey and a story within itself. But the good news is, is we have the land purchase that would conceivably house the piece that we're talking about, the 281 acres that we're talking about here, conceivably three schools, an elementary, a middle and a high, and then pursuing an additional elementary parcel that would meet the needs in other parts of the county as well. I need to tell you, this is a very historic moment, to be able to do that, to have the funding available, already executed in terms of where it sits and to be able to move forward. This is just a really positive opportunity and a positive piece to move forward with because it defines the needs of our community for the next 20 to 50 years in terms of what needs to be done with it. And it's, it's exciting because, you know, there's a great talk about the conversations about the, the fourth high school, but I think we need to think, you know, it's not too early, start thinking about this, board. What does a 21st century, what do 21st century schools, brick and mortar schools, look like to ensure that that's going to last the test of time to educate young people over the duration of many, many years? You know, you were talking about the chiller, you know, lasting eight, eight years. Schools are designed to last 50 to 100 years in that sense, you know, if they're kept up at that level and, you know, we're very fortunate in that sense. So I wanted you to frame it at a higher level, I wanted you to be very clear about where we are with that and I wanted the board to understand that this is a very, very important item to see.
The two sites that you speak of, Dr. Morano, we have the possibility of five buildings on those two sites, which, which will take us, as you're saying, for many years to come. The site up north, Ms. Howe, you know, she keeps up with all the development and everything, sharing with me that 22% of the residential housing has been in that area and about two-thirds of the enrollment for that new high school, projecting today's third graders out about, is in that area already. So it would be the right location to meet and we've talked all along that the high school really needs to be on the 235 corridor, that Californian north.
And may I use one more moment, Dr. Raspen, just to kind of really close this up, that when we're talking about the development of the schools, all of that comes out of the capital budget, obviously. So that when we're talking about the development of the Spring Ridge project and the Captain Walter Francis Duke, when we say we've got over $50 million in play, that's all capital money. But what I need to remind you of, you know, we're not even, we're still addressing FY14 operating budget, we're, we just had 15 approved. My mind is already on the development of 16 and the commissioners, you know, know this already and we've communicated this through to county government staff, that as we open up the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, there will be a significant piece of the operating budget for 16 that will include the staffing necessary to open that school. We're going to go through the, the redistricting process, we will go through all of that certain and we will reduce the enrollment of some of the surrounding schools. Some of those teachers and staff will go, but not all. So as we populate, the school has to be staffed appropriately to keep up with the growth as well. So there's, not always are these easy things to understand when you have all those different things in motion. You saw the considerations back and forth today at the Board of County Commissioners meeting where there was conversations about 15 and people were drifting back into 14. It's just a natural thing, it occurs, so you have to keep that straight. I'm talking about 14, 15 and 16 operating and now I've just jumped into the CIP as well and that's where this bucket of resources lays out as well. So I think that's the complete composite picture of that.
It is. I'd have to add to that, as you talk about those three years in operating, the capital money doesn't run out each year as the other. So, you know, we're operating on, on projects that the money that Mr. Hardwick's office is keeping up, that's five years, because we get along, design and everything, like this one will be the site, then we'll be in the design phase, the construction phase. So we're tracking money for a number of years and funding that way, which is very important and between Mr. Hardwick and Ms. Howe's office, they're keeping up with all of that for you on that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Good, good.
Okay, Mrs. Washington, please give us a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the letter of intent dated April 17, 2014, as amended, and further authorize staff to negotiate and execute a contract of sale in accordance with the terms of the letter of intent for the purchase of approximately 281 acres in Mechanicsville, Maryland, known as Multiflora LLC, for the specified amount for possible multiple school sites.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a second. Everyone in favor has signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Good job.
That's a round of applause on that one. I mean, you just, I guess I'm really emphasizing, this is a little cathartic right now in the sense that the amount of work that goes into what you just approved is just unbelievable in that sense and there's been many a phone call, if I could capture all the phone calls that have gone back and forth where these things were that close and then they sputter and stall and then it's sort of like feast or famine, you know, it's like nothing and all of a sudden, things start happening all at once and that's why you have that flexibility in the dollars.
So great news tonight, very good.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, moving on, there are no information items this evening. Next future board meeting will be on Wednesday, June 11th, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. This meeting's adjourned.